I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands alone, nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I say your name? The election is off, Dr. Collins, I'm talking at O P.
Yes, sir. Do we have any nominations for chairman?
nominate Lauren Burleson.
Second. All right, do we have a motion to elect Mr. Burleson by acclamation?
I'll make my.
Second. All right. Mr. Jordan, did you get that, Ms. Burleson?
Yes, I did.
Mr. Jordan and then Mr. Shipley.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Chairman, I turn it back up to you.
Yes, sir. I want to thank each and every one of you for your confidence in me and, hey, y'all tell me what to do. If you have something on your mind that we need to change or whatever, just let me know during the meeting how things are going or whatnot. I am going to work with y'all and I'm going to do my best. If you see something that doesn't look different this night, you got my number. And I appreciate each and every one of you and the work you do. Do we have any nominations for vice chairman?
I'm only, uh, Alice Farrell.
Alice Farrell has been nominated.
The same.
Have a second by Ms. McClarkin. Are there, do we have, have a motion for Mr. Farrell to be elected by acclamation and nomination seat? Motion by Mr. Clark.
Second.
By Mr. Spencer. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, no. A great selection, Mr. Burleson. Uh, we have to elect a Tennessee legislative network representative. Mr. Spencer, have you been doing that?
I've done it in the past. I'm not the most recent.
Who's been doing that?
I did it last time.
You did it last time?
Yeah, I did it.
It's kind of, it's not a lot, it's not likely to used to be. We get a lot of emails, but we still have to have one, uh, to kind of keep things going with, uh, T S B A and, uh, the legislature. And, uh, do we have any nominations for the T L N representative?
I can name Ms. Lauren McClarkin.
Ms. Lauren would be a good one.
Second.
Pass it around, pass it around.
Are there any other nominations? All those in favor of Ms. Lauren McClarkin being the T L N representative, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Ms. Lauren, if you have any questions, ask. Mr. Farrell, they do it from the circle here.
I'm going to ask questions.
It can't be that hard, Lauren, if I did, yeah. Do we have a motion to approve the objective as presented? Motion by Mr. Davidson. Second by, uh, Mr. Clark. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passed. Are there any additions to the objective?
What is that?
No, we're at the four hundred and eighty.
Oh, no, don't get it.
This appointment agreement in your package for N C A M E and everything, like that in the consent video.
It's in the package, so we added the consent, there's no objections.
Is that right?
Sorry.
I didn't understand. Is it a family treatment?
No, 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 no. It's a, an appointment, it's a contract with the N C A M E and the Tipton County Board of Education.
It's the same thing as whether that's your.
Yeah, well, if it was added in our seniorative agenda.
Oh, I got you.
Yeah, there you go. Do we have, uh, anyone who would like to remove any items from the consent agenda for discussion? Do we have a motion to approve as, as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Clark and second by Mr. Shipley. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passed. Dr. Collins?
Sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, our goal is to share updates with you about instruction, enrollment, operations, and school health. But before my colleagues share that information with you, I wanted to remind you about our plan. The plan, as we've discussed in previous meetings, is to get back in school. This week was the first to see face-to-face learners come back on consecutive days. So far, so good. But I do need to reiterate to you and those joining us on Facebook that this plan is fluid. I feel like I need to write that on my forehead. I've said that so much, and people seem to forget that. This is a fluid plan. We said that the very first night that we presented it and that y'all approved it, that this plan was fluid, because COVID is fluid. I've said that throughout the course of this week and the next, I'll continue to monitor positive case counts, distance learning efficiency for students, and the logistics for all of our teachers to be able to effectively instruct all students. If I determine that we need to make an adjustment to the schedule, then we will. I've been in every building at least twice over the past two weeks, and I've seen teachers stretched to the breaking point, but they're continuing on because they love these kids. But I want them to know that I am listening. We've been in those buildings and we've been asking them, and we'll continue to do so. Just had an ed council meeting this week where concerns were shared as well. So far, I want to let y'all know that we are only one of a handful of school systems who are not continuing some form of hybrid schedule through at least fall break. So, uh, I know that Lexington City, Tipton County, um, there are a few others that I talked to. Lakeland, Chester County are moving forward with five-day schedule like we're trying to do as well. But there are a multitude of systems that are continuing with some form of a hybrid plan all the way through at least fall break. Okay? So, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page there.
Are those, are those D C O systems also offering the virtual option?
Yes, sir, they are. They are. Yes, sir. Matter of fact, just about every one of them are offering that. Yes, sir.
Are their teachers having a tough time?
Yes, across the board. Yes, sir. That was actually a big piece of our discussion a couple of weeks ago with other superintendents. Everyone's struggling with it. Yes, sir. But I do want to thank everyone for their patience as we navigate these times. I know this has been difficult for everyone, but continue to know also that the current plan could adjust, as I deem necessary, for the efficiency of instruction to both face-to-face and distance learners. So again, this plan is fluid, and it depends on how those numbers get and what we need to do for efficiency. I do want to give you a few other updates before my colleagues begin to share as well. Device updates. So you know that we have ordered enough devices for every student to be one-to-one K-12. Those devices have all been ordered. We also ordered enough devices for every teacher to also have one of these devices, so they can have those devices with them in the classroom should they need them at home, et cetera, et cetera. All of these devices have cameras. All these devices have microphones built into them, so they'll be, uh, they'll be ready to roll. I want to give a shout out to our technology department. They had the forethought to, um, add a little bit to the price on the front of these things so that they will be shipped, they will be ready when they are shipped. They're basically coming in bubble wrap. We're even going to send them our, uh, our stickers with our barcodes on them, and they will come with the stickers already on them. So when they are shipped here, they'll be ready to go straight out to schools. And the order will be high school, middle school, elementary school. But of course, we're getting a lot of them, so they're all going to be coming, you know, pretty close to the same time. The first batch is due in in October. That was the batch we were supposed to get in August. That did not happen due to issues overseas. We'll just leave it at that. And then, um, our second batch should be coming in in December, and then that should complete all of them. We should have all of them in by then. And then, so the plan is, when we start back second semester, every student, every teacher will have a device. That's the plan. So as long as those numbers hold and those come in when they said we're supposed to get them, and we have no further updates than that, right, Kevin? That's, that's what we've heard thus far, that those should be here, and that will make a big difference. Once devices are in place, I know I'm speaking loudly and I'm sorry, I'm trying to use my teacher voice because I want everyone to be able to hear this, online and here, once devices are in place, packets will be greatly reduced, if not reduced altogether. There will be some situations where we need to have packets, whether that be for a special needs child or a 504, something like that. There may be the need for that occasionally, but those packets will go away once devices get here. There's no need for the packet after that. Once we get those devices, every child will have access to a device, and then we're going to help them have access to internet if they don't already have it. Okay? So the packets are going to go by the wayside as soon as all those devices, uh, come in. And I hear, I think, both parents and teachers cheering in the background as I say that. Next one. Six buses will be placed in various locations across the county, equipped with mobile hotspots for students who wish to seek them out. There will be two in Covington, there will be two in the Brighton area, and there will be two in the Munford slash Drummond's area. So we have six buses that are out-of-service buses, not buses we're running. We will push, pull, or tow those buses to their location. They will have a lock on it. Nobody's going to take them because they don't run anyway, and we're going to put them in a public area. For example, here in Covington, if you're familiar where the Pizza Hut, the Save-A-Lot parking lot is right down here, there will probably be a bus sitting right there in that parking lot. I've been reaching out to, uh, the mayors in each one of these areas to get their input on where would be a good place for those buses to be parked. Those buses will be there, and Kevin, as we speak, is working on hotspots for each one of those buses that will be mounted on those buses so anyone can get within a three-hundred-foot radius of those buses, can hit Wi-Fi in those areas. Uh, we're trying to make them, uh, pretty much spread out, so where there'll be one on that side of 51, on this part of Covington, the other one will be on this side of 51. You know, Brighton, there'll be one out around Fast Times area by 14 Highway. The other one will be, um, over at the fire department by the baseball fields there in Brighton, and then in Munford and Drummond's. I'm waiting on the mayor to get back with me on that. We'll have a couple of locations there as well. So we'll see how that goes. We're talking about probably around 10 grand for the hotspots, I guess, total we're getting for those, something that. So we'll have those, and then eventually, if we need to add more of those, then we can. It's a good use for those buses that we have out of service, and we're just using them for parks anyway. So that'll be good. At some point, continuing to move back and forth between distance learning and face-to-face will cease. Let me say that again so everybody can hear it. At some point, continuing to move back and forth between distance learning and face-to-face will cease. Now remember, we said at the very beginning, the whole fluid plan, all that, that everyone can move one time per nine weeks. We've been working on that. Some have had to move a few more than that because of, you know, here's the deal. If someone is quarantined, they have a case at home where there's a positive case, which Ms. Sherry will talk about here in a little bit, and there are some children or staff members that need to be quarantined at home, you know, that doesn't count in that once per nine weeks. If you're quarantined for those 14 days, that obviously doesn't count as your switch, so you're going to come back. But the plan is eventually that you are going to be where you are. We can't keep jumping back and forth every week. These teachers and administrators and even parents are going crazy trying to decide, you know, are they here or are they not here? So once this, this, we've been getting used to this for the last few months, and then eventually, we're going to say, that's it. You're going to, you're going to be where you are for the rest of the year. So I'll give everyone plenty of notice before I do that. That's not one of those that I'm going to announce the day before and say, here's what we're going to do. Everyone will have plenty of notice before that happens, but we want to, we want to get everyone on the same page. Also, a lot of the packets, we're going to see probably a lot of low grades on progress reports that are coming up.
This week or today?
Today. Those progress reports, we're going to see some low grades, but you know what? That's okay, because everyone needs to understand that the work that's been put into these packets and the, and the learning that's going to those homes needs to be done, and we have a lot of students who are not turning it in. So, um, that progress report is going to reflect that. And so they need to know that stuff has to come in. A lot of said, a lot, a lot of work went into that, and they need to be learning what's in those packets. So eventually, we'll go back to that as well.
Doesn't that cause a truancy issue as well if they don't turn in their work?
Certainly can. Yes, sir. Absolutely. We were just talking to Mr. Fields about that. You know, he's over on truancy stuff today. Absolutely. Yes, sir. That has to be turned in. So, uh, over this first semester, parents and students are going to need to settle on an option and decide if they're going to be true distance learners for the rest of the year or they're going to come back face-to-face. They're going to have to pick one. And, um, you know, we'll give everybody plenty of time to make that adjustment, but we're going to go, uh, we're going to go with that. Um, input that I've received from the community, um, as I'm sure y'all have as well, as I know the leader has as well, is all over the place. Everyone has a different opinion. Um, everyone has a different bandwagon. It is all over the place. So, um, you know, I'll get two calls one day against the mask mandate, and then I'll get two calls the next day to say, thank you so much for the mask mandate. Same way with classes, distance learning, everything. So everyone is all over the board. So I want to make sure that, um, everyone knows that it's not, you know, everyone pushing one way and we're going against that. That is not at all the case. Everyone is everywhere on this. Our grounding point is that we're going to try to do what's best for kids. That's why we're here. And so we're going to try to get going in that direction. Any questions? I could keep going on, but I'm not. I'm going to yield the floor to my colleagues who have some important things to tell you as well. But any questions about any of this stuff that I've just gone over, um, that I can help with, or that I can maybe go over a little better? Yes, sir?
Dr. Collins, have you had a lot of movement from face-to-face to virtual or virtual to face-to-face? Have you had more movement in one area than, as opposed to the other?
Yes, sir. That's actually a really good question. So we started off, at the very beginning, we were about 35% distance learning. So, you know, it's easy for us. We have, I think, our enrollment, which Dr. Fisher is going to talk about in minutes, a little over 10,000 kids. So you're talking about 3,500 kids were distance learning, right? Then it dropped, as early as last week, to 3,200 kids, 32%. And then this week, at the principal's meeting yesterday, my day is confused because Monday threw me off. Yesterday, it was 29%. So we're seeing the face-to-face number increase. Yes. But I think, you know, people are getting more comfortable. They're seeing, number one, that the distance learning piece is not a joke, that it's real. There's a lot to it and a lot you have to do on both sides of the fence, so they're seeing that. But they're also, you know, they're seeing the importance of being in that classroom as well. So, you know, we're trying to distance them in the building as best we can. Sherry will probably bring that up here in a little bit. But yes, sir, that's the trend that we're seeing, is going from the distance learning piece more to face-to-face. Absolutely.
Dr. Collins, as you move around through the field, what is the biggest concern that the teachers have?
The amount of work, the workload. You know, and everybody, I think, wants to push back and say, well, you know, that's just, that's just what it is. No, this is, this is completely different. This is, this workload is so much different than anyone's ever experienced. It's just a lot of stuff. And not only is it a lot, but it's like five or six different things. It's, you know, you have your face-to-face folks here, and then you have the packets ready for those that were on staggered, and then you also have the distance learners that are true distance learners, and then you have the packet for those that weren't at school that day but are coming the next day. I mean, it's just constant. And then during the time, you have the regular stuff that's new. You know, getting acquainted with all the new rules and regulations that our, our COVID contact has, has put in place for us. Oh, yeah, phone calls, and you're trying to keep up with helping, so they get phone calls and emails all the time while they're teaching. It's just a lot for everyone to get used to. So those are a lot of the, that's the main thing that I'm saying, but I, I just, I have to say this too. I, I, I sent them an email last week, you know, just to let everybody know what I thought, but I'm just, I'm, I'm so proud of everybody. They've been so resilient, because it has been tough. It has been tough, and I haven't had one person come up to me yet yelling at me, you're upset, or, you know, they're just like, hey, this is hard, but we're going to get through this. Thank you for listening, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, they've just been so tough, and I know it's been so hard on them. But that's probably the main thing, is just the amount of work that has to get done to get the kids that are both at home and those that are in, in the classroom, everything they need to get the instructional piece that they need. And the fact that we're still learning. I mean, this is brand new. We've never done this before. Our teachers hadn't done this before. This is brand new, and they're trying to learn the process. You know, we're, we're building the plane as we fly, kind of deal. Um, like I said, it's going to help a little bit once we get those devices in, but the workload right now is, is pretty tough. That's the main thing I'm hearing.
To give you an example, what I'm hearing on average is about three or four additional hours per day.
Absolutely. At least that.
And I think I'm being conservative with that. I know just that our situation, angels will sit up to not identify, just pray.
And then a lot of those teachers also have their own students that are at home, so they're doing work for the, with them, helping them with their homework that they have due for the, it's just, it's, it's a lot, a lot of stuff. It, it really is. Yes, sir?
So you're like a five-day schedule now, you said?
Right now, starting this week, where, of course, it was Monday we weren't here, so it's like a four-bay consecutive schedule, and so I'm going to monitor it this week and I'm going to monitor it next week, and then, you know, may make an adjustment depending on what all those things look like.
I know some have suggested maybe going to a four-day schedule and having a fifth day.
That's a, that's a distinct possibility. You know, the, um, when we were doing the Fridays, um, where, you know, it gave them a lot more time to connect with those distance learners and get all that stuff caught up, let the building, give the building a little bit of time to rest and do more fumigation in the building, um, just get all their stuff together and ready. Absolutely. That's, that, that is definitely one of the options that I'm looking at.
Make that call as you determine the.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Probably sooner than later, just for the record, but we'll see how it goes.
I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
If that call is made, students won't be there, but administrators and faculty will be there on Friday.
Correct. Yes. Administrators, faculty, staff, they will all be there, but students will all distance learn that day. Yes, sir.
Right.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Alrighty.
Thank you, Dr. Collins.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Dr. Bird is not here. Ms. Burke, um, she was.
It's just fine. Good evening, everybody. How are you? I'm just going to, uh, read to you Dr. Bird's, uh, report in her absence. We have, first thing I want to talk about is we've been working collaboratively with U T Martin on a grant called Grow Your Own, where, um, we have teacher assistants who are interested in getting their college degree, and, um, they're interested in dual certification program through the Grow Your Own grant. The certification will be in regular ed from pre-K to third grade and a sped pre-K to third grade. The program will begin in the fall of 2021 and the grant, if the grant is received. Through this funding, there's a one-time $100,000 grant through the State Department. We've had 12 peer professionals already apply and are waiting word from U T Martin and the state on the status of the grant. Okay? There is a, in your packet, there's a flyer about our virtual tutoring program that began on September the 7th. We are still looking for at least one ninth through 12th grade math certified teacher and one ninth through 12th, uh, science certified teacher that can assist middle school and high school students. So that started this week. Due to enrollment numbers, we have moved two teachers this week from different schools to another school. Tracy Conrad was moved from Crestview Elementary to Drummond's Elementary, and Lee Coons was moved from Crestview Middle to Munford Middle. A couple of concerns that have been brought up that we wanted to address with you tonight. Dr. Collins has already addressed some of them with you in his report and through his questions. But, um, the need for certain teachers to be designated as virtual teachers in the school so that the teachers could focus on their face-to-face learners, scheduling and signing of students were left up to the principals. Okay? Some of the principals are still considering moving that around where they have a virtual teacher in certain grade levels. They're looking at the numbers. Right now, the numbers are not quite stable because we just came back from our break from face-to-face, so they're still monitoring that and making adjustments to that. Also, they're looking at the need and the want of the teachers. There, some of them are having a hard time finding virtual-only teachers. Now that we're back in school each day, the hope is that that teacher, those teachers planning time will be reduced since they're not planning for students that are face-to-face on their staggered day, as Dr. Collins referenced a while ago. Additionally, as he also talked about, once students have been all assigned a district-owned device to use at home and the community Wi-Fi spots are set up, we're planning to remove the packet-only option that Dr. Collins just referenced. Um, and teachers, that will give them one less thing to plan and prepare for. Also, Dr. Collins is looking at putting a 25-hour person in each school for, like, some seasonal work until some time passes and some of our students come back face-to-face so that those, those individuals can help with packet-making, making copies, stuffing packets, and those types of things. Also, he addressed a second concern that Dr. Bird also addressed in her report, the switching back and forth from face-to-face. Our current plan has always stated that one change can be made per nine weeks, and the only exception should be students who are temporarily switching back and forth due to sickness or to quarantine. Some other recent, um, additional training that has been done. Some of our teachers thought that they didn't get enough training on some of our virtual platforms, so we have been introducing some more training for those teachers. Odyssey Ware and Edge Annuity sent out several videos we got from the company. We also got an elementary teacher that has been giving, uh, some tutorials to teachers that they can watch on their own time. Also, um, we have an Odyssey Ware expert that is at the court school, and we are using her, we got a sub for her for the court school, and we're using her in every elementary school, either a half-day or a whole day, depending on that school's needs. And I watched three sessions of that today, and it was really good. And teachers were able to ask her questions. She did like a 10-minute presentation, and then they, they asked specific things. Our high school teachers have been using Odyssey Ware for a long time, and our elementary have not, and we gave them a one-day training in the summer, and it was better in some schools than it was in others due to connectivity. You know, and all of these things are virtual, so. Yes, sir.
Teacher, uh, you know, when she goes to the elementary schools, and she hasn't already, will it be like a deal where she'll be able to spend some time with each teacher? Or it'll be a group, or how they're going to handle that?
Well, they're doing it different ways in different schools. Today, um, for example, I was at Munford Elementary, and they were doing it in a P L C setting. So the fifth-grade teachers came in all at once. There are some other schools that feel like they have a better handle on it, and so those people are just going to her as they need to. Yes, sir. Um, also, C K L A is our new, uh, reading curriculum in elementary school. We've done two Zoom sessions with them, one hour each last week, and they were optional for teachers. I gave them a certificate if they, um, attended those. And then, uh, Mr. Macklinn let me know that LearnZillion, uh, P D was offered to teachers to better utilize the online piece, um, for that LearnZillion platform that's also their new reading curriculum. He's also got another one based on teacher feedback and need. And then today, yesterday and today, um, Gallup Aid, which is our social studies curriculum that we adopted last year, they, um, they have a new platform. And so, um, we did that the last two afternoons, and that was optional for teachers too. That's all I have. Y'all have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Hey, thank you, Ms. Shipley.
You're welcome.
Good report.
Thank you.
Regular operations, Dr. Fisher.
Good evening.
Good evening, Sherry.
I too would like to say thank you to all of our staff during these very difficult days. That is how I described it yesterday to the principals. Everyone, our teachers, our assistants, bus drivers, cafeteria, our special ed staff, our administrators. We continue to just work hard every day, and they are, we are just seeing such great work from them. But we continue to ask our parents as well and our students to work with us because we're on a team, but it's the same team. We are all trying to achieve the best decision for every student. So, um, and yet address every challenge. First, let me share with you our enrollment. We currently have 10,400 students currently enrolled. 10,400. Face-to-face, we have 7,277 students. That is 71% of our students are face-to-face. Distance learning, we have 2,966 students, and that is 29% of our students. Now, at the end of the 1920 school year, that end, that just ended, we had 10,682 students. Now, at the end of the 1920 school year, that end, that just ended, we had 10,682 students. So our enrollment is down by 282 students. Okay? Just want to make you aware. So those are our enrollment numbers. Any questions about enrollment? Okay, good. Let me share with you food service. You know, during May, June, and July, we were able to provide meals, breakfast, and lunches for our students. A total of 98,198 meals have been served. That's 98,198 breakfasts as well as 98,198 lunches. And so we are so thankful that our bus drivers were able to help assist us as we drove through the community and we had the drive-through locations for the summer. We have just received a waiver where we will now be able to serve all of our children breakfast and lunch for free. So we began that on Tuesday of this week, so our students are not having to pay for these meals, and this will be through December 31st or until the money runs out from USDA. So we just began that this week, whichever comes first. And this is also for students that are going through the lines or our drive-through. This is for any student, any, any child that is 18 years or younger, and the child does not have to be present if the parents go through the drive-through. Okay? It's a great service. Our school-aged childcare, we are operating all of our sites at the capacity that we set to maintain social distancing. We also have all of our workers, we are able to maintain a 1 to 10 ratio, which is what the state requires. We currently have a waiting list in each of our schools, but it's not a large waiting list. So we have eight children or under on each of the waiting lists. And so this week, we've made a few changes within, a few modifications, but we're still able to run our sites. What we have to be very aware of is that as we have workers, caregivers that have tested positive or are being quarantined, then we lose those workers, but we're able to maintain those sites right now. So that's something else we have to be very, very aware of. I want to make one other reminder that is definitely for all of our parents. This is the census time. We need our parents to complete the 2020 census. We've had a census worker that has come out and spoke with us. Of course, everyone counts, and all of our Tipton County citizens should complete the census. We're asking all of our parents to make sure that they have completed the census. This is our federal funding to all of our state's programs is impacted by the census. There is about $2,000 per year for every person that is counted on the census. So as we look at 100 people in an area, this could mean about $200,000 per year or $2 million over 10 years that we could lose. And so it's very important, and so we just want to encourage everyone to complete their census. They can go online, they can go to Tipton County Library. It only takes about 10 minutes to do that, so we just want to continue that. Are there any questions from me? Okay, then Ms. Sherry's gonna come, and she's gonna share our COVID update. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fisher.
Good evening. I guess you're all waiting on this, right? First of all, I'll start out giving the report that we've collected, and then I'm gonna show you what the new thing that the state's doing. It just rolled out this week. Just to let you know, since August 17th, since the last board meeting, I'm just gonna read off some numbers and stop me and ask questions at any time about them, so I'll just let you know these numbers first. So since August 17th, we've had nine positive staff members. We've had one positive faculty that resulted in seven faculty being out for 14 days. And what that hap, what happened there was you had that one faculty who did not socially, they did not socially distance in a group, so that many ended up going quarantining for 14 days because of one positive. We've had six negative staff members, people who thought they might have it or something and went and got tested and were negative. And since August 17th, we've had 30 quarantined, and that could be anywhere from one to 14 days. Some of them were quarantined because they were awaiting test results for surgical procedures, and they, they have to stay out until those test results are back. We have had zero students affected by a faculty being quarantined or being positive. So we've had no contacts. All the teachers are staying six feet or more away from their students, and so far, we've had nothing resulting in a student having to be quarantined because of a faculty member. Student cases, we, I just started, week before last, collecting every Friday, the nurses send me a report of what's happened during the week in their schools. So the week of August 24th, we had 56 students sent home with symptoms, and symptoms are anything that might seem like COVID-19 that we might be concerned about. They may come back the next day if the symptom is over with, but it is a, just a precautionary thing so that they're not in that building if they happen to get sicker. So that was the, that was the week we were every other day, you know, with students. We also, during that first week, had eight students who were positive, and we had 43 students that were quarantined. And those eight positives and 43 quarantined, for the most part, were results from home or something outside of the school. None of the cases were where anybody contacted it within the school, and the only ones that involved several students was them getting together on the weekend, and they happened to be at the same school. The week of August 31st, last week, we had 33 students sent home with symptoms, one positive student, one new positive, and then 31 students quarantined, and that was last week. So so far, there has been only one student positive case that resulted in other students being considered contacts, and that's what I just said. And so so far, I just keep holding my breath every day because we, we've done well. Social distancing is hard. It's very hard, and this week has been probably the hardest week, having everybody back in the buildings. That's the biggest concern I get asked, is how are we gonna keep them six feet apart? How are we gonna, we can't do that. We got too many in the classroom. But what we've asked them to do is do the best you can. You know, if you can't do, you know, do the best you can, keeping, keeping them away from each other. In the hallways, you keep them moving. You just don't, they just don't need to stand and linger in the hallways. You keep them moving, and they're not considered contacts then. There's, we would love that the CDC would come off that six-foot rule a little bit because what that hurts is when you do contact tracing. It doesn't mean you're gonna just have these huge outbreaks if you're closer than six feet, but if students are closer than six feet and one student is positive, then you may send more students home for quarantine time. So that's what happens if they're being closer than six feet. Same way with staff, and we, we tell them over and over, stay out of the lounge, stay out of the staff lounges. You don't need to be eating together at round tables. You know, you really need to be careful because that's, that's what's happened in a lot of our cases, is people just thinking, oh, well, I wasn't even thinking, you know, but I think they're thinking more now because we've had it happen twice. So any questions on those numbers? And I'll have more at the end of this week on Friday, so. And the state just did the district dashboard here, and I'll show you. You can go to Tennessee Department of Ed, and this comes up. It is, the map shows every county, and when you're on, I couldn't do it up here, but when you're on your laptop or something, you can hover over a dot of county, and it will show just a little quick snapshot of how many positive cases they've had. And, but this is Tipton County, and then you can scroll down and see that we had to give a report from last week. The report from Sunday to Sunday, the report goes out on Monday by 5:00 the next week, so you're getting the week before. So last week in Tipton County, we only had, we had one student positive, and we only had one staff positive last week. So if you have less than five, that's how it's reported, is less than, less than five. And this just shows, this is our primary operating model, and you can go to any county in Tennessee and find this information right now. So if you wanted to compare Tipton County to Lauderdale Fed or anybody like that, this is where you go to. So it's a really, it's a good thing. More work on us, but.
If you go down, it has the schools, right?
Yes. If you go down, and we don't report positives by school. They're just, especially if it's just a small number. So it's just reported by district, and the school thing just gives you the, the educational part of it. So we were already ahead of them because we'd already decided to do this for Tipton County, and that's across the state, though. Just a couple more things I'll let you know. With health-wise, we will be doing flu shots for teachers, and it's highly encouraged that every teacher, as many that can get flu shots this year, so we will be working with local pharmacies, and we will be providing flu shots, hopefully before fall break this year. We usually do it afterwards, but we're gonna do it a couple weeks earlier this year. We are, we're working with PCS again this year with our students and any kind of emotional support, and we also were, have an extra therapist coming this year. It's gonna start in January. They wrote a grant, and it's gonna provide one for two of our schools that have the highest needs when it comes to mental health things. As far as any changes with COVID right now, I read every single day the health department and CDC's guidelines. The only changes that have been made is CDC has changed the social distancing from six feet for 10 minutes to six feet for 15. So you can spend five more minutes closer to somebody now, so I thought, gosh, we're gonna, that's gonna be harder to keep up with, but anyway, it, it can help. If you're rotating students in groups, you could do it 15 minutes instead of 10. Right now, the CDC has backed off taking student temps. Also, they're saying that they do not feel like taking student temps is something that is worth the time that it takes because so many students that are positive are not running temperatures. So, but at this time, we will, we're gonna continue to do it and just see how things go in the next couple of weeks. Is that right, Dr. Coons?
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's kind of a cumbersome thing to get, especially having all the students in the building. And that's all I have. You have any questions?
Anybody have any, any questions? Thank you, Ms. Y'allbrook. Ms. May Ford, I have a report.
I'm gonna do the financial report first, if you will. My glasses. All right, for the month of August in the general fund, we received $7,56,724. That's 8.4% of our budget. And this, thus far, we've received $7,318,190, so 8.7% of the budget. And then our expenditures this month were $4,206,010. That's 4.9% of the budget. And you can see that our budget expenditures are over our budget revenue. Remember, we have $1,262 that is coming from the fund balance, as well as the $660,000 that we're going to receive back, and then the $78,000 that the district, I mean, that the county gave us extra makes up that $2 million that we got from fund balance. So those numbers are off because we're, we're not at balanced budget anymore. Any questions on 141? All right, 142. If you do comparisons and look at last year versus this year, you can see that CARES Act money has brought in quite a bit of money, $801,000 compared to only $299 last year, so 8.8% of their budget has been received. And as I said, most of that is from CARES money that they have received. They have had a $3.3,364,979 increase from our original budget, so they have increased quite a bit, as you have seen through these amendments. For their expenditures, $626,902, and that's 6.9% of their expenditure budget. Questions on 142? And 143, if you look at the difference between these two months, it's a huge difference. Last year, $19,000 for the month of August, and as Dr. Fisher was referencing, the $511,000 that came in, came in because of the summer feeding program for June, July, and August, or June and July, that was, as she had mentioned, the $98,000 breakfasts and the $98,000 lunches. So they had $196,396 meals that were fed to our Tipton County students. So amazing what they had done, and the subsidy that was brought in due to those dollars that were spent. They, their expenditures, of course, were a little lower than last year because we started school late, so that's the difference on the cafeteria. But everything is looking good for the cafeteria at this point, especially with the free lunches coming in. Any questions on the cafeteria? All right, and then for 177, if you look at the August expenditures, $8,282.58, when we take away all of the encumbered money that we have put aside, we have $441,000 left to spend in capital improvements, and we have $80,000 left to pay for the concession stand, and $9,800 is encumbered for some basketball scoreboards at Brighton High. So we have to take care of Mufford. They haven't done anything yet that I'm aware of, Dr. Coons. Are you aware of anything? So they'll have to do their $150,000, and Brighton hasn't spent all of theirs either, so they'll take care of that hopefully soon. Any questions about the financial report?
This will be approved immediately.
Okay.
Have a motion to approve the financial report as presented. Most by Mr. Clark, and second by Mr. Jor. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed, no further.
Okay, thank you. So I tried to make the amendment for this time as easy to read as possible. The only ones that we're really looking at this time are the ones that are in yellow. We've already done the ones that are not in yellow the last time, but we didn't take it to the county, so that's why we've got two in one. So the dollars that you see that have been included are Title I, Title II, Title IV, carryover dollars, and then also the reopening and programmatic supports grant, which gives us $125,000, which the county commission, the county finance committee was very gracious to let us bring it to them Tuesday. So after you all approve it, they will go on and approve it at their county meeting on Monday. So they were very gracious to do that. So that $125,000 will buy us yet another $564,000, I mean, 564 laptops. Ooh, that would be terrible. So we have increased the federal budget by $1,323,208.89. And the places where they have spent that, all of those in 7,100, those are all Title I dollars, $41,000 for teachers. They have lowered by $833 for educational assistance, and then all of the benefits that have to come along with the teachers that have been hired for Title I. Then they also have increased their title, their Title I funding for substitutes by $50,961. They've added $100,000 for instructional supplies and $160,000 for instructional equipment, and that's not including that 564 laptops. So on page two, you can see that they lowered their medical insurance and the other support, $72,130. They added $2,000 for materials and supplies, $599 other charges, $164,856, and other equipment, $1,712. And then in 72 to 10, they had other salaries and wages and benefits for those first. for those first six or seven. They took away some travel from the vocational budget, added $2,000 to other contracted services, and then the other supplies and materials, $3,600. In-service staff development, that's the Title II grant, $241,612, and the other equipment line, $124,9 something is for those 564 laptops. That's where that extra grant dollars came from. And then on the last, the third page, there aren't any changes for this amendment that you all have to approve, and the only thing that's different is the additional indirect cost in $99,105.04, $14,130.84. So that is the cumulative carryover dollars and reopening and programmatic supports grant.
Are there any questions about the immediate federal funding? If not, then we have a motion to approve. Two motions by Mr. Davis, and second by Mr. Pearl. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no motion, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Hey, I do have a quick question for you.
Okay, sure.
Did you take your calculator out to figure out how much hourly employees at the schools were costing?
I did, about $100,750.
Is that for a short period of time, or?
For the rest of, for the rest of the school year, if that's how, you know, we may, it's hard to take something away once you get it. And I think Dr. Combs just wanted to know what it would be to the end of the year, and what that's what it would be.
And we kind of discussed both through the end of the year, or also maybe just up through Christmas, you know, see how it goes. And once we get those devices in hand, we don't need as much help with those packets, et cetera, then, you know, we can maybe back off of that, so we gotta kind of figure both.
And you're probably, we'd have an extra 14 school support organization annual verification forms that we need to approve. They've all been signed off on by the powers that be. And we had a few of them in the cetacean, and some of these came in a little bit after the conference. But anyway, if ever, anybody have any questions about, they've all been signed off, ready to go. Do we have a motion to approve these verification forms? Motion by Mr. Shepard, and second by Mr. Clark. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no vote for aye. Dr. Combs, do you have anything else?
I just want to, one thing I failed to mention earlier, we're, one more thing that we've added to our procedure. Every single week, we're Zooming with the principals, every week. So we'll Zoom with the elementary group, and then we'll Zoom with the middle school group, and then we'll Zoom with the high school group. It's all the principals, a number of supervisors, whoever we deem relevant up here that we, you know, help in whatever the week holds, we'll have that Zoom meeting, and I think everyone's real happy about that. And that helps me, too, because, you know, with 15 schools, you try to get out there, but at the same time, you know, you're, sometimes you think you've communicated and you haven't. So that weekly address is gonna help us well, so we're excited. We've been able to start that, and that was a suggestion of the principals, and we started doing that, so we're excited about that. But that began last week. This week, we had a principal meeting, and we're gonna start again next week. Yes, sir.
All right. Anybody else have any, do you have a motion to adjourn? Motion by?